Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Did the commission just approve the master services agreement that was included in the backup material?
That was my understanding, yeah, in the previous item.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's an effective date that is blank in this document.
Oh, yeah.
Can we, can we talk about that date real quick?
Let's talk about that, yeah. There's an entire contract, thank you so much, backup attorney.
The term of the agreement?
Yeah, there's an entire term that's missing there, which is how long it's gonna run for, so.
Maybe let's make it April 1st, so when we come back next meeting, we kinda have these layoffs at the point our person. So, maybe make it then, and then we have that ironed out, so.
So, make it effective April 1st to have it on the agenda for the 26th, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then how long?
Yeah, how long?
Well, I think realistically, until we approve the final budget, I think, wouldn't we approve this through the end of this fiscal year? That makes sense. What we voted on, and then, and then we can redo it, and then it'll be re-upped after we approve the final budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are we good to call, or do we need a motion, or what do you need?
Do we need a motion, Brian, on that?
We will need a motion, so we need to go reopen that one, and get that contract term in there.
And that was item one, right?
Uh, two.
Item two. Okay, so we reopen item two.
So, I amend my motion by adding, uh, the contract starts April 1st, and goes through the end of this current fiscal year, at which time we'll re-open it, assuming the budget is approved.
And you have your second on that, so I need to amend my second.
Okay. Travis amended his motion, and Lori seconded the amended motion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So, pass you now, it was, thank you very much for your comment, that was very good. So, again, we're gonna just make one quick detour before we open the regular going to the blanket part, and we are gonna go to page eight, item four, under notice of untimed items, is item A, discussion for possible action, the approval, request approval for grant application to the Office of the Attorney General Services, Training Officers, Prosecutors, SPOD Fund, for the continuation of the victim witness services program administered by the District Attorney's Office, any amount of forty thousand dollars, with a required match of twenty-five percent, maxime.
So, this is a continuing grant type thing, it's been going on since 2002, and, and it should have read not to exceed forty thousand, so that's the limitations set by the state, the current grant is under that, it would probably be the same. It's for training our seniors, sexual assault nurses and seniors, training deputies, providing additional services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and, uh, family violence, that do not fall under the preview of the other two grants that I operate under. I'm asking your permission, it's due April 13th, so I need your permission pretty soon, to be able to apply.
I'll make a motion to approve the amount of forty, uh, not to exceed forty thousand.
Exactly. Motion by Lori, and a second by Shane, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, we're done at, and now here, back in order on page two, towards just past nine o'clock, it's Budget Workshop. Item one is the FY21 Budget Workshop, discussion for possible action, direction of fiscal year budget forms, and secondary services, community, communities, revenue, payroll, and preliminary discussion involving all requirements covered during the budget workshops to balance a budget. And, item one is ancillary, and that would be, the first one would be the library.
Thank you, and Lori, come now, and looks like we're here. And, um, this budget has not, uh, requested any changes to its staff in the upcoming fiscal year, and, um, it still has its full-time librarian, or library director, excuse me, and then a library page, um, and then a full-time management assistant for the library, and then half-time employees as library assistant, children's librarian, and another library assistant. And, um, I will let Lori take it from here, in addition to her general fund budget, she also has a budget in here for her library gift fund, and she'll be discussing that as well, so I'll let Lori go ahead and take it from there.
Good morning, first off, I'd like to thank the commissioners that came and visited with me about the departments I oversee, I thought that was really helpful for all of us. As Elizabeth said, this budget hasn't changed much, the only main increase is in the internet area, and I brought my chairman with me today, Bruce Eldridge, from the library board, and so he's gonna speak a little bit about where we're at with the fiber optics.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
We are on pace to be in the next funding year for the E-Rate to bring fiber into the library. Our most recent was our 471 filing, and, um, so our documents are all in place to be reviewed, and, um, as an anchor institution in a rural community, um, it's, looks typically favorable that we will get funded for this project. We, uh, the library board chose a provider, uh, to do this work, um, based on RFPs, so that, and we chose the one that probably would work best for us, but there are increased costs with better internet. We don't pay a lot of internet right now, we also don't have the best internet right now, so. We're hoping to be able to get that, but it is a significant increase even with the E-Rate paying a portion up to seventy percent of the cost. It increases our internet cost a lot, but we also know that won't occur till probably later in the year. So, that would be why we didn't have it carry through for a full year of, of funding this year, 'cause it probably won't be installed at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Well, and I can speak to what Bruce is saying, while there is an increase here, it's important that we do this, 'cause then it gets the internet right here, and that's from the street, which is not much closer to the courthouse, and that's all funded by E-Rate, or the majority of it, so.
Ninety, ninety percent will be funded, seventy percent through E-Rate, ten percent through a state that matches an FCC, so ninety percent will be funded.
It's so worthwhile, and, you know, we look at everything in this community, right, I mean, it's paramount, there's housing and, and internet, and high-speed internet for any kind of development, I think those two are equally as important, and I think getting it here is such a huge step, that, this, I, I think the cost is reasonable when you consider the gain.
Thanks.
Anybody got any questions on that?
Looks like the only major change.
And then, and the library gift fund is pretty much the same thing, um, the revenues, uh, balance with the expenditures, and a lot of it is grants and donations. Once, you know, if there's any questions on that, I say it pretty much remains the same year after year.
Any questions by anyone on the board?
Excuse me.
Okay.
Good looking, brother.
And you got nothing else, Lori?
Um, yeah, so, as an anchor institution, and when we increase our internet, we are expecting traffic to increase in the library, and at that point, we may need more staff, and some of, we may need some improvements in the library too, like the carpet in the conference room, or the main part of the library is aging, and with more traffic, it's, we don't want our library to look ran down, so, just in the future, we're going to need some of those improvements inside, you know, as far as the building as well.
I believe that, uh, the carpet is in your capital improvement budget?
Yeah.
And then, um, as far as the increased staffing, that's something we'll have to look at. The other question that I had on the internet, because we have the operational piece to the internet increase, but I believe that we have some construction costs that need to go with that, or is that being covered a hundred percent? Ninety percent by E-Rate, and ten percent by the state?
Structure costs in the proposal.
Right, the, the company that is installing this is the company that is working with the school district, and they didn't feel like there was going to be a significant cost to actually get it to the library.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So, the only cost is that monthly fee?
Right, uh, yeah.
Okay.
That makes the monthly fee sound even more reasonable.
Anyone else got anything on, for the library? If not, thank you both for coming, thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
Do you have a senior center?
Well, I can.
Are you doing that, part of that, or?
Thank you, Bruce.
Just like, oh, appreciate it.
Let's skip the next two and go straight to the senior center, that's one, thank you, Lori.
Okay, um, the senior center budget, there is gonna be a retirement in the next fiscal year that I know Elizabeth has accounted for. Other than that, once again, it's a budget that runs very tight, and, so we just do our best. We run a tight ship over there, um, all the, all the drivers are fifteen hours a week, so there's no benefits, and then you have three full-time employees to cook, assistant cook, and the supervisor. And, um, this is a budget that's a challenge, because your revenues don't change a lot, sometimes you're doing a lot of digging, and yet, the expenditures for a lot of those areas, you don't have a lot of control over either, as such as food costs, as you guys know, when you go to the grocery store, um, fuel costs go up and down, um, the allocation cost tends to go up every year, so, like I say, there's some of those things in the budget, you just try to deal with, but it's a challenging budget. And especially right now with the, um, increase in number use and all that, um, it's a balancing act.
The, there, there will be a couple of things of note, one is that, of course, the revenues for this attack I analyzed until March 25th, so those may change based on, because they did have a little tax into this fund. And also, there are grant funds in here, and those can go up and down, um, so we need to make sure that as we go ahead and see those adjustments, those are automatic augmentations, I, I believe that we shouldn't see a whole large change from my discussions with Lori on those numbers. And, um, the other thing is that there is going to be some movement over there in the upcoming months because of the renovation, and I don't know if we will see any additional costs due to that or not, but it's something we might wanna be prepared, prepared for and flexible on in order to make sure that the program goes forward smoothly.
Which ones the contractors hired, and we can talk with that individual, and we all know more on that too, because, yeah, we're aware of that too, that need to know some of those things.
Might require a little bit more time and effort on behalf of the staff there, so it might impact the staffing number overall, or the staffing, the wage level, so.
We're gonna keep, try to keep things as staff's close as we can, but until we know what we're dealing with exactly.
Construction creates cost, and, and it's just, it's just gonna happen, so, yeah, I think we do, we'd be very focused on that.
Yeah, and I think that there's certainly gonna be some cost to move the equipment, tables, chairs, everything from the senior center to the high school, there's certainly gonna be cost.
Well, we won't be moving chairs and tables, it'll mainly be commodities.
Whatever, it's gonna be.
But, yeah, it's gonna entail some help from maintenance and that, and getting through it.
Just a heads up.
We can do that.
Yeah, I believe we can, um, because Bill's been in the loop on this with his staff and how it might impact them, but just to make sure that everybody is aware that that huge project is going forward this summer, very exciting, but we'll take a little bit of extra time.
It'll be fun, an adventure.
Anything else on the senior center? I thoroughly enjoy going there, and you guys are doing a great job, and, boy, the increase in people going in there every day, I'm there, I see it, it's amazing how vital that is to this community, and I absolutely can't stress that enough. It's, their population's aging, and that senior center's going right along with it, doing a great job servicing everybody, so congratulations to you and the staff.
Well, right now, we're averaging fifty-five in-house, and we have sixty-five on homebound.
There you go.
So, yeah, and you gotta remember, the baby boomers are in the next five years.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori, for that.
Okay. Now, we'll go back to the second item, which is the year.
Okay, and I do not see Lance here, but I'm happy to go ahead and just speak to his, um, budget. He doesn't anticipate much change, um, from what he's told me. Uh, there may be some movement, uh, based on the need for services for that BLM office, but we usually contract with them, we do the work, they reimburse us. Um, so he wasn't anticipating a whole lot of change to this budget, and, um, he, he did talk about perhaps needing, and I, I believe there's an email from him in your backup, that he's working on trying to get some door rails and the Navy hanger, uh, fixed, and that might impact his budget, but he hasn't gotten to me with any final numbers. We'll bring that forward at the next meeting as he gets more information available on that. And then, um, as far as his airport capital improvement plan, uh, there is nothing scheduled for next year that he told me about, um, that would require money into this fund, but if we have additional based on what the projections are, net proceeds, revenues, I would, I would encourage a transfer to this fund, just because we know there are different, uh, improvement projects that are going to be coming up, and we wanna make sure that we have those match funds available, 'cause it's a really good deal for the county, to be able to get those federal funds, and I think it's like a six-point-something percent match from the county, and so it does help keep our, um, airport, the taxiways, the runways. Absolutely. Up to date and maintained. Absolutely. So, as we look at those numbers after the revenue projections come in, um, in, uh, at the end of March, looking at perhaps requesting a certain amount of that to go over to this airport capital improvement plan.
As the airport invited for meeting, and they all compared with this improvement plan, that's all I got.
Anybody else on the airport? Alright, being done, we'll move on to egg extension.
Okay, and, um, Juan Carlos does send his apologies, he is traveling and is not able to be here. He did ask me to represent this budget for him, he said that he is anticipating, uh, that we would have, uh, he's increased the salaries and wages, and I believe that is for some interns to help them with work, however, those are actually gonna be contracts for us through UNR, they won't actually be wages, so I believe he's, they're both for research support. He is, uh, other than that, he's keeping pretty much the same as what he has now, and, um, he does show what travel he's, he thinks that his travel is gonna be increasing, so that's another area he's looking at, in order to, uh, meet the 4H needs. And then, he does have, um, his equipment worksheet, um, but he shows all of his items at zero, um, so, when I have a chance to go ahead and get back together with him, um, I will talk to him about that, and I almost am anticipating that it's a wish list for him, and not necessarily his anticipation that we will be purchasing his equipment next year, but I believe that that is in support of his 4H program, that he's looking at that. Um, he did outline what he plans to do with his egg extension activity money, and he's looking at a drone project, and, uh, 4H after-school, and coordinator travel, um, so, he should be here at his, his, uh, at our next meeting, to go ahead and give you more information if you would like. And he did show you some long-term needs there, he is a bit that, again, that is, uh, expenditures over revenues, but he does have a fund balance to go ahead and, uh, balance that out, plus, we don't have updated numbers for the revenues yet, so, um, doing a final analysis on this budget and hearing him go ahead and talk to you about specifics on these different items and how they will help his program, I think is best coming from him as opposed to me, as just giving you the financial advice.
Sounds good.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to economic development.
Okay. Think that'll go through?
No, no, neither.
Okay, thank you. Economic development is, um, let's see, let me get there, sorry, mind that interruption. One more page. Okay, so, this, um, does have a change in the, the FTE of the position. We hired a person who is half-time emergency management and half-time grant writer for the county, and, uh, the emergency management grant doesn't have adequate funds to support that person, um, full-time, so I am asking that they only have enough funds for quarter time, so I am asking that we go ahead and, um, put this person in the general fund at, uh, an additional quarter time, and, so it's three-quarter time for your general fund, and one-quarter time for your grants, uh, for emergency management. I do have, uh, in the, some travel in there, that is both for a CDBG presentation and training, both of which are required for that grant, and snipplum presentation and training, um, both of which are required for that grant. So, those are just, I have, uh, one person going in each of those, and, and till the grant writer is probably up to speed, I, it may be two, that may go with them, but we'll see how we can work those numbers out, um, 'cause I just don't wanna throw her in there and off the deep end without support. And then, we do have the 6700, that's our NNRDA, our Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority, uh, and they, I have not seen a, a notice from them for an increase, do, who is my liaison, that's you, Shane?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything about increases for those?
There hasn't been any discussion as of yet on increases, so.
Okay, okay, so I have it budgeted in there, the 6700, which is the same for this year. And then, I do have, there was a request, and I believe that Lori handed out material at yesterday's meeting, we related to.
Was that Monday?
Oh, I'm sorry, on Monday.
Monday.
Okay, uh, in relation to the Main Street, uh, achievements, but we do have the fifteen thousand dollar request in here for next year for a contribution to Main Street, and so that number is added into the budget. And that's all I have, uh, other than that is staying pretty much the same are the.
Let me, um, come back to you, 'cause I, I wish I'd had this idea sooner before we kinda go into the budgets, but, um, I was just gonna do some research on possibly, let's just find out what the cost would be, and possibly contracting with, uh, an organization, that, uh, there, there's several in Reno that are reputable, and their sole purpose is to go to places like California and rescue refugees and bring them here, big companies that want to not be paying high taxes, and they bring them out here. Reno's out of room, um, the Reno Tahoe Industrial Center's totally sold out, there's nowhere for them to go, really, and so, I just wanted to explore what that would cost, what that, does that look like to have them partner with us and start proactively bringing those companies to, uh, to possibly move out here, manufacturing operations, things like that. They're very good at it, and, and, uh, that's the kind of economic development we need, we're paying for the NNRDA, but they are, uh, their loyalties are mixed because they're having to work for multiple counties, and I'd really love to have somebody just bat for our team that's just working exclusively for us, so. I have no idea what that cost, or what it even looks like.
It may cost us nothing, but we'll just find out.
Yeah.
There we go, okay.
I, uh, everybody knows where I'm at on the Main Street deal, the fifteen thousand dollars, I know a couple of those properties were purchased, we did the snipplum thing, I'll be taking a look at the fifteen thousand dollars and see if that's necessary, my, my, my reasoning for that is, us being a government agency, and, and people who own private property and all that property down there, doing something rather than us just giving fifteen thousand dollars every single year for the Main Street. I saw and I read all their accomplishments, I still have, I have second thoughts, I don't have second thoughts, I, I have opposition to that fifteen thousand dollars going to that Main Street America when we're moving snipplum up to the other thing, and the main reason is because of what's transpired over the last fifty years downtown, which is zero, and what they're, they're trying to accomplish, I, I applaud their efforts, but for us to give the fifteen thousand dollars every year, I voted no on it the last time, I'll take a second look at that, but I think the fifteen thousand dollars perpetuated maybe not, it's not a way out, I'd kinda like to go, so, I know what the, how the board feels, but I'm just throwing that out there just because I want to, and I, and that's how I feel, and I wanted to make, make it perfectly clear, okay, so that's.
And, and to Richard's point, for the fifteen, I don't wanna go into some office thing or some training, it needs to go, if I'm gonna support it, it has to go under hard access. The signs, uh, I was kinda not happy with that, as, uh, they did finally cut it down, but there at the corner at Ely Ford, there was a pole in front of the sign for eight months, or however long, you couldn't even see the sign, so that kinda really pissed me off in a way, I'm glad they did cut it down, but, uh, I'm kinda fifty-fifty on this this year, uh, you know, I, I don't know.
Uh, I, uh, I support the concept, um, but I definitely wanna make sure that it's effective, before spending the money, it's gotta be doing something.
Would you like to have them on the agenda to talk to them? I mean, I know that the film festival is, is, you know.
Yeah, they would come and just say, we're gonna use the fifteen thousand for XYZ, and we can look at that and say, okay, that will actually make a difference, uh, then.
Yes.
I would, I.
Yeah, whether it's at the fifteen, or we even reduce it, I mean, it, you know.
I definitely support the concept, I think, wearing with me, and I'm gonna see if you want, um, but, uh, just throw them, you know, and should use that.
Right, and, and so I did tell them that, that I would go ahead and put it in, and we'll see.
Okay.
So, um, I will make some contacts then, and, and have somebody come for the next agenda.
Anyone else got a comment? Okay, we'll move on, I think that's, that's good on the economic development, right, Elizabeth, we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to natural resources, we just had a presentation with the natural resources, so let's look at that.
Correct, and so, uh, the natural resources salaries is staying the same, that is just for your water advisory and PLEL secretary for one meeting each month for each of those, so a total of twenty-four meetings plus related fringe benefits. Um, I do have, uh, four, uh, trips for quarterly, uh, water advisory board meetings, um, added into this budget. Um, we do have seventy-five hundred in there for dues, that is to the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority. I have not heard that we, that will be increasing, uh, three thousand dollars is kept there, in there for water resources planning, those are for the various needs that may come up related to, uh, the water advisory board, or permitting, or, uh, whatever. And then, we have contract services, and here's where we have the Advocates for Community Environment, that is the firm that represents us for, as far as water attorney, that is in at the same amount as last year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and I have the natural resources contractor in here at thirty thousand, but I will take that down to twenty-five thousand, and increase contingency by that, uh, same amount, so that we have, as passed earlier, for that particular contract.
And Elizabeth, can you kinda put the Advocates for Community Environment just on a, uh, a, a check or something, so, we just don't forget about it, but if, while we're doing this budget, in three months, if SNWA does come out and says, we're, we're done, that we just don't forget to cut this back?
Okay.
I think it's still important to keep them as a retainer in some sort, but if.
We probably could reduce it.
Yes.
Problem with their resources is, I, they may be on the map, but I, I'm not hearing a death rattle yet. I, I, I think we're, I don't think we've seen anywhere near the last of that organization. Their, their, their resources are too vast, and, and they've had such an unrealistic focus on this area without ever, just to finally, after all these years, to be looking at an alternative, I just, I just can't make myself believe they're gonna give up on this yet.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, if they, like I said, it. Yeah, and that's, I mean, if they, like I said, anything short of, yeah, we need to keep it for sure.
Okay, any more, Elizabeth?
Uh, no, that's all on natural resources.
Okay, anybody else got anything for that? If not, we'll move on, we'll move on to the communities.